We're going to call this meeting to order. If you could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, every and justice for all.
You may be seated.
I couldn't see John, but I think that's all.
Today's date is April the 4th, 2022, and this is the Tell City Common Council meeting. Before we adopt the agenda, I do need to move. We've had a lot of changes to new business, stuff added, stuff moved. So I originally had the Perry County Port Authority, the PCPA, support letter for the Raze Grant Program as item A, and I moved it to G. We're going to move it back up to A1, okay? Bill was able to get here in time. He was going to attend the one at the county, but he got Alvin to attend instead. So Bill's here, and rather than keep Bill waiting the whole meeting, I gave his spot back. We need to remove item B, however, the annual agreement between the Tell City Water and wastewater. That was mistakenly put on here and was supposed to be on the Board of Works, which we did approve that at that meeting. And you should have the copies where it talks about the hotel tax abatement and the 7th Street Apartments abatement as well, right? On your agendas? You do? Okay, great. That's all the changes I have. I apologize for these changes. If there's nothing else to change, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion made by Larry, do you hear a second? Second by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stands approved. Presentation of minutes for approval, March the 7th and March the 21st. That's a special one. So there should be two sets of minutes, though it was distributed Friday. Just for questions, Julie, you did finally get them, right? Because I know Vern said she'd sent it to you, but you didn't get it till today. Did everybody else get their emails like on Friday, or did they get it today?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Well, we're just, we've had the email issue. We're just trying to make sure we keep it, you know? If you don't get them Friday or something, or Monday, email Vern and let her know, or call in so we can get it to you. I don't want you to think we're ignoring you or not, because poor Vern has had a lot of issues of emails, and we're trying to make sure you get them. So I hope you've had a moment to review your March 7th and the 21st. If you haven't, take just a moment if you could. We can entertain a motion to approve them. If you've had a moment to review them all.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion made by Gary. Do you hear a second? Second by Larry. Any further discussion?
No, that abstained from the earlier, the first ones. I wasn't at the meeting.
So you guys abstain from the 7th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. We don't have enough council members here to approve them. We'll have to hold those over to the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We have three here.
Well, I'd say-
John and Julie are both abstaining.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know you were abstaining.
So we could approve the 21st if we wanted to, I guess.
Well, you can knock out whatever you can knock out, and we'll circle back to approving.
But it won't make a difference in Connie's book, it'll throw her thing off.
Let's just, let's just delay all of them.
Yeah. Because I know Connie goes through her minute book. We don't want to do that to you, Connie. All right. So we'll just hold off on those. This, I guess it-
Tabled.
Tabled.
Yep.
All right. Comments of citizens. At this time, if there are any citizens that would like to make any comments, if they could, step up to the microphones, state your name and address for the minutes. All right. Hearing none. Move on to committee and ward reports. We'll start with Ward 1, Larry Clement.
The only thing I have to report is, we have a planned commission meeting scheduled for April the 14th.
Me neither.
Not this Thursday, but yes.
Yeah, April 14th. Yes, it is April 14th, and one of the items that we're going to be considering at the Plan Commission Meeting is the proposed Tell City Comprehensive Plan, which draft copy is dated March the 10th, 2022. I got that today, so I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but that's the only thing I've got to report on.
Okay.
I have Julie volunteer to turn around phones.
Julie, if you would like, I can email you a copy. You can look at it electronically, or if you want this paper copy, just, we only have two of them. Actually, we have three, but just bring it back. So that's all I ask. Yes?
I think there was one.
I believe that Julie hopefully received the link to look at it.
Electronically.
Yeah, Janice sent an email last week that had a link down in the bottom of the email.
The council and Plan Commission both. It's about hosting, and it is more than, you know, and it's also available via our Tell City website. If you go to the website, there's a big box on the front homepage of 22.
There was a link provided also.
Yeah. You can, you can worry the wealth if you borrow the paper copy and, yeah. Oh, I understand it. Sure.
If your email's like mine, you get those that are addressed to 20 people, and your spam filter catches it, you never see it.
I'm a little bit old school. Like, Julie, I like to read.
That's, that's, and that's why we-
I read my eyes, trying to read.
I got you.
Yep. Problem is-
We did ask the consultant to give us some rare copies for better reason. I knew there'd be people who wanted some of the copies.
And we only got two paper copies, and Julie actually, from the Plan Commission, actually ran him off. Larry won. But these booklets were like 40 something dollars apiece. That's, well, that's just a draft, so I mean, don't lose it, but we didn't order but two because they're 40 bucks, and I wasn't going to spend a fortune on books that were not going to be the finals. So 40 dollars is pretty steep.
Considering we paid them, what, 29.5 for the plan?
Something like that, but I'm just saying.
More than half.
Yeah, so anyways. Anything else, Larry?
No, I'm sorry.
All right. Julie, Ward 2. Oh, okay. All right. We'll go down, and we'll get Gary, Ward 4.
Yeah, we've got some Salder Waste District report here. We have a new director now, Chris Wheeler. Now, the Tell City News editor is Chris Martin.
Yeah, I don't know where that comes from.
I'm not sure who Chris Martin is, some fictitious alias of hers.
Yeah.
But her name is actually Chris Wheeler. She's been working as an interim director for us since Ken's retirement at the end of December. And the committee that interviewed, she received the support of that committee, and she was named as a director. Okay, we sent out the statements for the year 2022, and I think we sent out like 8260 or so, and we received something like 7400 approximately back. And I'm not sure why we did, but we sent the trailers out in April, so the people living in trailers or trailer owners get those in April. And the only, the problem is when you send out that many, you get some that are not deliverable. So people have moved out, or changed addresses, or whatever. So we get back some that cannot be delivered. As far as recyclables, we're doing a little more in terms of tonnage, and prices are stable. As far as that goes, slightly up, some down the next month, so. And then we did seven, we've got 7.32 tons of metal and 6.23 tons of cardboard. And prices staying about the same. We're trying, they're working on a new advisory committee there. By law, it's not necessary that we have an advisory board, but the committee, I mean, the Perry County Salt and Waste always had one. But members who had been on there for a number of years resigned in mass a few months ago. So we're, there's some attempt now made to reorganize an advisory committee, and a few people are showing interest in doing that. So that's really about all with that right now, so. We do have a new director, and his name is Chris Wheeler.
Is that it?
Two.
All right. Thank you. And we got John Little. He's participating electronically. Any update, John, from council at large?
No, sir, I have no report.
All right. Thank you. Any statements from the city attorney, the clerk treasurer?
I don't have any, maybe see.
Okay. All right. Moving on, there is nothing under old business, so we're going to go down to new business, what I'm calling item A1. Perry County Port Authority Support Letter for Raze Program. We have Bill Goffin here, representative. You guys should have a copy of a support letter, I think in there. If you don't, I've got the original in here. And Bill, if you want, can you kind of update them a little bit on what this program is and?
I appreciate it, y'all. To fair mayor and council members, a couple of things about this particular program that we're applying for a grant. This is a federal grant. It will require, well, we applied for this grant last year, and we were rejected. We made it through the first phase, but we were turned down for the second phase because of some technicalities within the grant that we had written. And one of those was the fact that we were asking for 100% funding instead of a co-op funding of, say, 80/20 or something like that. So we now have revised the grant, and things are changing rapidly in the rail industry. Currently, this application calls for almost about a little over 13 miles of replacement rail at 132-pound rail. Now, that's higher than any rail that we have presently on the line. We have replaced in the last five, six, seven years about seven miles of rail on our own. And we've replaced most of that with 115-pound rail. What this rail size means is 115 pounds is three foot of rail. 132 pound, obviously, is three foot of rail as well. So there'll be, there'll be some adjustments that we'd have to make if we get this grant. We would appreciate your, your support in, you know, presenting the letter to the Department of Transportation in support of it. Currently, we're asking for $9 million. The project will be in a neighborhood of $11 million. We will be able to sell much of the, well, all of the 75-pound rail that we take up, and we should recuperate well over $1 million with that. And so then we're working with the state to see if we can secure a grant for, in a neighborhood of $800,000 to make our total match, and I believe we can do that. One of the things that I might mention to you is, we have recently hired a firm that's going to do what I, the best way, I guess, to describe it is, do an ultrasound of our rail. They've got, they've got machines that can go right down the rail track, every foot of it, both sides, and tell you what's the condition of that rail. Now, we may find out when we get this that we're in a lot worse shape than we think we are. So we, you know, we've increased the traffic on the rail in the last few years, and we have another firm, one of our existing customers that has told us that they will add 400 rail cars this year alone in their production. So the traffic is only going to increase on the rail. And therefore, it's so important that we, we get this grant in, and hopefully, with letters of support from our congressman, the city, the county, and other interested people, that we can, you know, we'll be successful. That's about all. I would mention that we're working with the city on the $1.6 million grant that we got, which was a federal grant as well, to do the new pier, an unloading facility at the port. And currently, we have that match in place as well. So, you know, it's a matter of paperwork now, and when you're dealing with the federal government and quote a relatively new administration, just a year old, and it's very difficult to get these things done in a timely fashion. But having dealt with grants a big part of my life, I'm patient, and, you know, I think we'll be successful. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have, and, you know, concerning this or anything on the rail.
Just a couple of quick comments. I noticed in the letter, Bill, that you said if this project is approved and finished, that it'll allow 286,000-pound freight cars to move on the track instead of the 263,000.
Yeah.
So that will allow larger cars, which I'm gathering by that reduces the cost for the companies that are buying these products, and I would think it would also take some traffic off of the highways.
Well, it'll take a considerable amount of traffic off the highways. We would be able, number one, it's a win for our customers in that regard, especially with Pica. We haul load after load out Tell City, out from what we unloaded at the port up there, and we'll be able to haul 286,000 pounds of material. And, you know, versus 230, it doesn't sound like a lot, but, but it is. It really adds up. And then there's going to be an increase from Lincoln City to Tell City or Troy, actually, probably go to Troy. Well, Pica will be increasing their scrap usage by a great deal. And that would be a big, big help for them, because they can load those scrap cars down real heavy now, and we'll be able to handle it, so. It's a win-win for their customer.
The other comment, it has nothing to do with this, but I'm pleased to hear you investigating this. I know nothing about the technology, how they can determine how good a rail is. But I think it's important to do that assessment, because I'm kind of an old grants person also, and one of the things that we need to have in place if we want to be successful in securing grants is to know the state of our rails. So I think that assessment is very important, and hopefully, it will lead to future improvements.
Well, and I agree with you, Larry, I think it is too. You have to realize that the rail, the bulk of that rail was put in in 1890. So, I mean, it's even older than I am, you know? So, and wear and tear on it in the last 15, 20 years has been far greater than it was in the years before that, because the primary user back then was a chair company. And lightweight material versus what we're handling now, so. Yeah, the board, once we found out that this was available, we jumped right on it. I mean, it would cost us $25,000, $35,000, but be well worth it. We've had, we've had for the boards, for the councils' consideration, we've had two D-rails since first year. One involved a locomotive running off, and that could have been, that could have been bad. It was a broken rail. We inspect the rail every day, but, you know, breaks, breaks happen. And the locomotive, thank God, wasn't damaged, but then we lost, on the other one, we lost three rail cars. We had to spend quite a bit of money getting those back up, so. Appreciate again your support and your interest in the Perry County Port Authority.
Okay. The other comments? Counsel, what this is? I have a copy of this support letter on the letterhead here, and if the council still chooses to approve this, we'll need each of you that are here tonight that could sign it, and I sign, and Connie will attest to signature. So I could, I'd like to entertain a motion for us to-
Authorize execution of the letter.
Authorize this and submit this support letter for the port authority.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to pass this down while you're all here, so you don't have to come in. There's some blanks there on the right side of the page. If you could sign that, please. All right. Thank you, Bill, and we'll get this signed. I'll have myself or Janice give you a call tomorrow when it's ready, and we could either email it to you or the hard copy, whichever you prefer. All right. Moving on.
John's signature.
John, well, we got to get John's signature, probably. John, when will you be-
John, if you want to authorize somebody to sign on your behalf, or do you have a chance to have a stand?
When we, John, when will you be back in town?
I should be back in town Friday.
Okay. We want to get this. What's the, what's the, what's the urgency on this, Bill?
The 8th. 7th. They want to submit it on the 8th, so they'll-
Okay.
We got to submit it the 8th.
Yeah. So he won't work.
I'm sorry, Janice, you were going to say something?
No, I was just saying, 3:15, the contact needed. I said, 7th is their deadline, have to get it in, have to hear your submissions.
On the 8th, so. What does that have to do with three signatures? Because Phillip's out. It's fine.
That'll work.
Best we can do.
It's majority.
It is majority. Actually, just pass that to Connie.
If anybody ever asks, Bill, then you tell them that it was a unanimous vote, that one member was operating remotely and couldn't be in to sign.
And the other one was out of the country. Phillip's in Paris.
Oh, okay.
So he's out of the country. So he literally can't get it. He's in Paris, France. So he really can't sign it. All right. It would be on that one.
He's forwarding down the sin, probably.
Moving on to what was the original item A now. So item A, the taxi cab license, Marksman Cab. You should have a copy of this in your packets there. So it's a resolution. I'll just handle this. You can handle this one?
Well, no, I'll let you guys read it, but I was just going to explain a little bit there.
Yeah, you go ahead.
We did have, Marksman Cab has, Jerry Sparkle has provided us with all the information on his vehicles. The chief of police, Derek Llewellyn, has inspected all the vehicles and found them to be in proper working order, and he, and Jerry has provided his liability insurance to us. So then our next step is, is the council will, so chooses to approve the resolution that we have, then we will issue any of the permits.
We've done this routinely for years now.
Everything, the wording in, in resolution is the same as it's been for years except that they changed.
Okay. Only thing I would change at the very bottom, if it matters, Resolution 2021-2.
I thought it took that off.
I saw that, I was like, hey, all right. It's, it's just basically Connie's records.
No, I got you.
It's nothing-
Say, I got a clean copy.
Yeah, it's, it's nothing really that, that important for us, so. All right. Resolution 2022-6, Resolution of the City of Tell City for Public Convenience and Necessity. Whereas the City of Tell City deems the public convenience and necessity justifies the operation of Marksman Cab, Inc., a taxi service serving citizens of Tell City and surrounding communities of public transportation. And whereas the city company has submitted to the clerk treasurer of the City of Tell City an application for a taxi cab license in accordance to ordinance 451. And whereas the clerk treasurer has received the required documentation, certification from the chief of police that the vehicles used for transportation of passengers are deemed safe for operation, and a current certificate of liability insurance has been received, and the annual fee of $100 has been paid. Now, therefore, we resolve that the common council of the City of Tell City authorize the issues of an annual taxi cab license to the applicant Marksman, Inc., for the year ending December 31st of 2022. Mayor Chris Kell presiding officer attests to Connie Berger. Counsel, you've heard the first reading, and it only requires one reading of Resolution 2022-6. If there are any other questions, I entertain a motion to approve.
That you're saying the numbers?
Oh, it was just down here.
Oh, yeah. That's just how she saves it. Yes, it's, like, she wanted to back and look it up.
Actually, on the original ordinance, she was following various topics.
Yeah, it's not on that. That's just an in-house thing.
You look for a motion?
I am.
I'll make a motion that this resolution is-
All right. Motion made by Gary, do you hear a second? Second by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion approved. All right. I have a pencil, I can't sign everything. All right. Moving down, item B, we did remove, so we'll just go to item C, additional appropriation. Connie, I'm going to let you drive the additional appropriation part there.
Well, actually, this is an additional appropriation, as you can see, and we do have a request within our Department of Dispatch, and Chief Llewellyn is here to explain this. And then the other part of this is the William Tell Complex Fund, and Chris and I can explain that when we get to it, so. Chief would like to explain what he is, what they are proposing for the dispatch.
Thank you, Campbell. So this is something that Assistant Chief Smith, the marketing officer, is out now, so I think I can answer most of the questions about it if you have any. But right now, we have eight full-time dispatchers, and that is just enough for us to provide 24-hour coverage. You know, each day, we have two different brackets. We have a day shift that works, you know, for two days in a row, there's a 7:00 a.m., a 7:00 p.m., then a 7:00 p.m., a 7:00 a.m., and then the other bracket, so as people come in. So right now, we are fully staffed and dispatched, so long as we don't have anyone out. If someone's on vacation, or if someone is out with a illness, then we are left either using overtime or using part-time coverage. Well, one thing that we learned is, is part-time is, you know, never guaranteed. We just lost a really good part-time dispatcher, and we're just cleaning. So we know that they come and go, and that's understandable if it's not a full-time job. And with COVID, it really opened our eyes to the reality that we need to be proactive, making sure that we are adequate with staff and whatnot. So what we would like to do is, and speaking with Connie, keeping her apprised on all this as well, we would like to add an additional full-time employee. The primary job title, so to speak, of this person would be a records clerk, but they would be cross-trained to work as a dispatcher that would keep their certifications current. And in fact, we would most likely move, you know, one of our part-time people into a full-time position that's already trained and whatnot. The idea is, is that when we do have a vacation, or we have a vacancy within our full-time staff, which is, is quite often, we have a lot of seniority in our dispatch center, so those people get seniority, they get more vacation time. So the idea is, is that we can use that person to fill in when we have a full-time dispatcher that's out. When we, when we do have that, you know, all the dispatchers there, we will use them as an assistant to records. We had a part-time records clerk recently. She's no longer employed with us, we never filled that position. So we know that there is enough work to keep that person busy when we're not using them in the dispatch center. We feel like that this is a way for us to be more efficient, rather than relying on overtime and, you know, part-time, keeping those part-time people on the hook, so to speak, about, you know, being available for us. So I think that while it is some additional appropriation, I think that, you know, when we go- we, when we consider the overtime and the part-time pay that we're using now, it kind of almost balances itself out, where it's, it's not as expensive as what it seems. So, the other thing is, this person would be trained in records. That is something that even myself, I don't know all the ins and outs about laws, about what can be released, and redaction, and.
Me neither.
Retention of records. I've been talking to Jeff about that recently. So, it's very important that we be mindful of the idea that if our records clerk, our records coordinator is out, and, you know, she's going to be off on a, on a leave coming out here soon, we need to be mindful of the idea that we need to have somebody that can do that job. You know, that, that's a job that does not go away. There's always going to be those requests coming in, reports have to get to prosecutor's office and whatnot. So, this person would be trained to do her job and dispatch. So, I just really feel like that, you know, it, it's a good idea. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions the best I can about it.
Chief, how many hours do we get to do the, the full-time dispatch work?
It balances out. So, they have a long week and a short week. So, on an average, they average 42 hours a week, if you figure out the average. So, there's a short week where they, you know, they, they'll work on Monday and Tuesday, then they'll be off on Wednesday, Thursday, then they'll work from Wednesday to Sunday. And then the next week is opposite.
So, 42 hours, basically, averaging out 42 hours work week times 52 weeks.
Correct.
I was just trying to figure out what the hour limit is.
And right now, they have built-in overtime into their pay because they are, it's a building in classification. Officers work the second half of hours, but we don't have built-in overtime because we are exempted from that, because we are, are long-kept, and so. We, we know that with this person, we can flex their schedule to where we can maybe keep them out of overtime, but yet still use them to fill in vacancies.
Well, if I figure right, you think they're right, you can buy this amount requested.
Well, this amount that's requested is from May 1.
Oh, well, that's not an annual figure.
Correct, correct. That is just from May 1.
We might have been under minimum wage.
Well, it's not under minimum wage, it was over, huh?
Yeah, it would have been.
That is.
He had, he had. He had a timeline, it's a lot easier.
I did not train that with me at all.
Is it like 16, 18?
Yeah. So.
That's weird.
And it's, and it's a salary position, it's not a per hour.
Oh. And I think that this pay would be consistent to records, not dispatch. Because the, the records, you know, like I said, typically, they don't have overtime. And I think even with this person too, we can try to avoid keeping them, getting, you know, them in overtime by keeping flexible workers' schedules.
And they work eight hours a day and not 12, is that correct?
Records clerk.
On a records coordinator or records clerk position. And, and I do, I have checked, I feel this fits in, and we did have enough money with what we're getting from 911 to be able to suffice paying this. And we do have enough unappropriated in our general fund also to cover this.
Would their pay change if they go from doing records to actually dispatching?
Only if, right. Yeah, they, only if they would go into overtime or whatever, you know, they would be, it would be in the job description that they would be cross-trained, so whoever would move into that position would have to understand that, you know, we're going to be, use where we need it. And, you know, I will mention also that there's been some, in, in the mix of all of the ups and downs through our, our 911 agreements and things, there has been some good things that's, that's developed there. One of the things is, is that we, the, the secondary piece app that's out at the Armory is being remodeled soon. I think the equipment's been ordered. So, having another dispatcher on hand, if we were to have a major event, we could move that dispatcher out there to the Armory, and then we would have three consoles set up to, to handle that situation, whether it be a major storm event, or, you know, some other type of disaster, you know, man-made disaster, or whatever. So, you know, just, just being proactive there for some of the communities.
Okay. William Tell Complex Fund. You want to drive it, or you want to drive it? I'll let you drive this one.
At your last meeting, you did approve the ordinance establishing new William Tell Complex Fund. And within that fund, we are putting the amount of money that we're receiving from the entities that are, will be leasing from us. And then we want to, in turn, take that money that we receive and pay the utilities and any maintenance and anything on the William Tell Complex.
That's gross.
The German-American bank.
Okay.
Yes. But that way then we will be able to pay the utilities, and we're hoping that the utilities and all that will be paid out of this fund.
Yeah.
And the way the mayor has it all figured, we think we're good here.
We will have, in essence, four, you could say five leases. German-American is paying 400 and something for their ATM outback. You've got two other tenants, three other tenants upstairs currently leasing, one sub-leasing. And then you'll have the suite upstairs that we've got a verbal commitment on to lease it as well. So, between all that, that will more than cover the utilities on this facility, and then some. And the then some part, I hope, you know, we're going to put in that reserve and build up for any repairs. So, five, 10 years down the line, you need to do air conditioner, roof, whatever, we're not having to scramble on the general fund to make the repairs, the money will be there. So, in essence, that's the plan.
What about insurance?
Mm-hmm. That was figured in some of it.
Yes. I didn't put a separate, I didn't put a separate line in this year's budget for insurance because.
We don't pay.
We've already paid it.
Yeah.
Till our insurance renewes again, so we may have to come back and, and do an additional for that. But yes, we did discuss insurance too.
Covered under our existing policy right now.
Yes.
I had that discussion, Brad Ron.
So, we're covered on that.
Yeah.
Any questions regarding that? Okay. If there are no questions, then I intend a motion to approve.
Move for a verbal.
Motion made by Larry. If you're here, second. Seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Hear none, we'll call for a vote. All of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'll send this down for everyone's signature.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the item D, the ARP Amendment to Ordinance. Jeff, I'm going to let you handle this, if you don't mind. And I'll chime in on it too, but.
I can try.
I'll let you kind of explain the scope of the ordinance, and then we can entertain a motion to, for the reading.
Well, this, and this ordinance is, I, full disclosure, my law partner and I sought out some cooperation from other communities that already adopted similar ordinances. Most every municipality, county, town, city in the state of Indiana received ARP funds. The original ordinance 1175 that we adopted regarding the ARP funds got back last year, I believe it was, is almost exactly the duplicate of what every local government entity adopted. This ordinance here is drafted using similar amendments to ordinances that other municipalities have already incorporated. I specifically used one that was drafted and approved by Spencer County. This one also mirrors language in the ordinance. I do not know if Town of Troy has already adopted theirs, or if it's on their agenda for adoption. The county is working on a similar ordinance. Ours, so it's easier for me to explain how ours differs. The gist of what we've got here is that we are designating our funds, and let me make sure I use it, a standard allowance of revenue loss. That language in this ordinance is a way of declaring all of the funds we received as a loss, which then removes a lot of the various requirements to account for those funds, and some of the limitations on how we could use them. It doesn't mean that we have to change how we're going to use them. It simply means that it cuts out a lot of the red tape and accounting for it when we do decide to use these funds, however we decide to use them. As you all know, the mayor established a ARP committee to do some of the legwork, and ultimately review applications that may come from not-for-profits or other entities for the use of these funds. The, the, the areas where this proposed ordinance differs from the ones you may see in Spencer County and others, is we've kind of worked in some language to maintain the relevance of that ARP committee and the work they've been doing. And so, what we've set up is a situation here where we designate all of the funds as a loss to free up how we can spend them, and then incorporate requirements that all applications would, would originate with the ARP committee. My view is that so the ARP, ARP committee can be the ones that spend the time doing the legwork, working with the applicants to review their project, to make sure that it's responsible, or fiscally sound request, maybe for the appropriate reason. I know there's some concern that we don't want to just dole out all these funds for non-COVID-related uses until we're certain that all of the COVID-related applications are addressed. And so, the rest of the provisions in here are to set out a process that ensures that these applications are going to go to the ARP committee first. The ARP committee is going to review them. The ARP committee is going to make a recommendation. And then there's language in here that says that when the council receives this recommendation, and I can still see applicants showing up at a council meeting and explaining, maybe a representative of the ARP committee as well, I know the mayor's on the ARP committee. So, they bring that application and recommendation before this council, at which point the council either approves it, denies it, or sends it back to the ARP committee for further review. In essence, you make recommendations and send it back. You know, there was some discussion about whether the ARP committee could, could make the final decisions, and I think certainly not. This, this, this council is the fiscal body that handles all appropriations for the city, so that, under this ordinance, the council would retain that authority. It would just become less of a responsibility for the council to do the initial legwork, to walk the applicants through the process, to do the initial review. And so, that's kind of my summary of what we've done here, and how it differs from some of the other ordinances that I looked at in drafting this. Other ordinances simply don't reference any committees that the other cities, towns, or other entities, counties may have reviewing these applications. So, long-winded summary, but that's kind of a summary of what we did here.
One thing that the ARP committee will help do is, you know, if we didn't have that committee, it'd be the council's job to review all the applications, answer all the questions, phone calls about the money, how it's going. I mean, you have, at the end of the day, you do have the choice to approve it or deny it. But if the council, you know, doesn't want the committee, that's fine. You know, I wouldn't, I think it needs to be, you know, I think we need to have it, but if they choose not to, then they have, your guys are going to have to all meet and go through all the applications, answer all the questions and phone calls. I'm just, it's up to the council. Kind of takes some legwork off of you guys. You know, I don't know what your schedules allow, but. The council, the committee started off with seven, eight? Eight. We had a few resign for just personal reasons, changes in life and some things, and so we've got a good solid five now, I think, that are very dedicated to going through all the applications and getting it done.
They did meet earlier today, and I explained largely the same explanation to the ARP committee earlier about what I've placed in this, and what I've, what I've included in consultation with the members of that committee.
Who are the five people on the committee?
Myself, the mayor, clerk treasurer, council member John Little, Kelly Harding, and Danny Bowlen. Danny Bowlen is, he was supposed to be, in essence, he's also a Tel City resident on it, but he also wears two hats, where he is a county council member. So, we done that, hoping to try to get somebody on the counties, but they didn't choose anybody from city council-wise to be on it, and that's their choice. But I just felt it was fair to do it that way, to try to show some transparency in working together. And that's okay. It doesn't have to be that way, but it worked out fine for us, because, you know, we've got Danny's insight on things that the county's doing that's helped us. They don't have that. So, it's, we, we got the better end of it, I think, so.
Okay. Do we, want to talk about an hour, or we want to go to the formality?
We can do either. Whatever you guys want to do.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can I expand, from my knowledge, your standard allowance of revenue loss? Now, what, what does that entail now?
It is a long-winded way of saying that we're just going to designate that all of these funds were losses related to COVID. And under the federal regulations, once the local entity does that, and it's actually buried in here, it says, whereas the U.S. Treasury has adopted final rules which allow up to $10 million of the ARP funds awarded to be designated a standard allowance of revenue loss. Now, Danny Bowlen did raise a good issue. He said, why's that, why's that language in there? People are going to think we've got $10 million. $10 million is the maximum amount that any entity could declare as a loss. We have 1,631,126.97, which is, which is down below in the ordinance. Since it falls under that $10 million limit, the city can declare it a loss, and then we, then we don't have to abide by all of the various accounting rules and, and such that were otherwise included in the American Rescue Plan to, to govern how we would spend these funds.
You don't have to prove any of the numbers you put there, right? So, without proof of actual, where we lost.
Correct. Yeah, you don't, you don't have to, you don't have, therefore, if you have an expenditure from these ARP funds, these 1.6 million, we don't have to prove that we, Bob's charity lost $80,000 by gathering all the documents. We can dole it out on good faith that that was, and I mean, that's not, that's not saying that, that the ARP committee or the council's not necessarily going to verify it. We just don't have to go, go to the mat to prove that that was an actual loss.
And Connie reports under one line item versus.
Correct.
The lawsuit.
Yes. Yes.
So, the reporting is much simpler.
That's my understanding.
Absolutely.
The reporting will be on a sheet here.
Connie would appreciate that part.
No offense, no offense to Bob's charity out there if they did actually lose $80,000.
Connie, is that the correct amount?
I, yeah, what I did was, we received a little over $3,000 in a supplemental amount, and I added it to what? I added it to this. I didn't include any interest that we have earned.
We had, we had a discussion about that, because the interest was not what was dispersed to us. That's what it was earned.
So, this is just what's been dispersed to us.
I knew there was a small amount.
It's a little over $3,000 extra that we just received.
So, as long as we don't receive another 8.4 million, then we're still under our $10 million limit. I'd love to have to deal with the $10 million limit, quite frankly. If the federal government wants to give us eight and a half million more dollars, we'll, we'll deal with their accounting.
Okay. I, I want to just get this off the top of my head, so you know, and the mayor knows where I stand on this beginning. I'm going to, I, I have concerns about having the advisory committee. It's not required, and to me, it just adds another level of bureaucracy. Where if we stay in here, under number one, you say that said money may be used for general governmental services. Why do we establish another committee or a group to review something that we can do without that group? Additionally, if, for instance, the council wanted to buy a new factory with this money, or a new police car with this money, are we going to have to submit a proposal to this advisory committee? Are we going to do that?
The way, the way it reads now, that that would be the process, would be the application would go through the advisory committee.
Why?
Maybe if they don't advise us.
You could still do it.
We can still prove it, correct.
Correct.
We don't have all their.
Correct. He's an advisor.
You all have final say, so you could come along and say, I want to, want to appropriate this amount of money out of the ARP funds, and we can do an initial liberation and bring it to you.
Let me, let me walk back, though, because the language as it stands right now, that options are approved, deny, or, or sent back to the advisory committee. So, I guess if you read between that, the lines on that third option, the council could ultimately be sending it back, saying, here's what we want. You can't make the advisory committee bring it back to you. So, I do see how there's a potential.
This is the number two, all applications and requests are intended to first be submitted to the advisory council.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. So, you're right. The initial application would go there, and then if you look at number three, the way we've structured the potential outcomes, approve, deny, or send it back to the committee. committee's recommendation, you could either drop the application or revise your ordinance again. So I guess you can always look at it that way. The council does always have the ability to revise the ordinance. And I'm not advocating for either position on this, I'm the drafter.
The only reason the committee, I feel, is beneficial is the county had their first open rounds for small business and nonprofits and had close to fifty applicants. It's going to take quite a while to review those fifty applicants, just, and that's in just round one, they're going to do a round two, I think, in May is what Danny had said, or somewhere around that, I'm not sure. You know, I mean, it said it's totally up to the council, if they have the time and want to put in, you know, review all fifty of those and go through all, answer all the questions and put together, you know, to help small businesses and nonprofits, that's more power to them.
Does, does county have an advisory committee?
Yeah, they do now.
They have one.
Yeah, they do, they do. Oh, yeah. Oh, I didn't know they had an ARP advisory.
Oh, yeah. A lot of communities do.
Randy Cole's the chair over there.
He's the chair of that.
Luke was.
Oh, okay. And then when Luke left, Randy's the chair.
Yeah.
I think Charlie Ballmeister, is he on it? I think he might be. Aaron Emerson's on it.
You can chair it.
Sherwood's still on it.
Yeah, Tara Dammun. There's, there's quite a few on there, theirs is a lot larger than ours.
All right, so just, so I could be quick. Do they have to send it forward to us for us to come up with a decision? I mean, if we're interested in blah blah.
As it reads right now, they wouldn't necessarily have to.
Well, I imagine if they have an application, say, ten applicants, and they approve, they forward on seven of them to you, the approvals, and they could also include the three that they denied.
Like, I think they would have to report their recommendation, so they'd be sending a recommendation that you're not approved, under his hypothetical, that you not approve a certain number of them. We're fuzzy in this ordinance on whether at that point you could still approve it.
No, I think they can.
Actually, frankly, I think you could.
You could send a recommendation. It's just a recommendation, you could say, yes, we love that idea or not.
So I guess I can backtrack a little bit on Larry's question there, is that if something was sent to them, whether it be by the fire department sending a request to approve funds for a new fire truck, and they recommended against approval, but it came to you guys with their recommendation, your options are still approve, deny, or send it back. So, so let me backtrack a little bit and say, I think you do have enough flexibility as long as it originates with the committee, and the mayor makes a good point there, that's, that's, and I know that was the intention that was discussed with me, is to try to take some of the responsibility from the council for the nitty-gritty details and relieve you of that, so that it can come to you as a fully formed plan with a recommendation.
It's really no different than a lot of other committees that we do have, just not related to this, where they, you know, you have a committee for Wendy Creek, they bring stuff to the thing, you have other, the pool committee, so forth, would bring things to the council where it works for recommendations.
You mentioned ten things and they would approve seven. Okay, the three things that they would not approve, could those images ring those independently back to us?
Well, I think those would be, I think those would be reported to you
They would be reported to you guys via the committee.
With a recommendation from the committee that you not approve them.
But we, we would not be bound by that.
But I think you could still approve, I mean, you are the appropriating committee. You are responsible for the appropriation of funds, so, or committee, council, let's not confuse committee with council. The council makes the appropriations. This money is only going to be spent based upon the council approval.
Right.
They can make a recommendation, recommendate, they can recommend it all the live-long day, and if you deny it, it's not going to be spent. So what I, guess what I'm kind of walking back to myself, or changing my mind in real time here, is if they send a recommendation to you that you not approve an application, you still have three options, approve, deny, or send it back to the committee. So I can see situations where you might have one that you might be inclined to review, but whatever, for whatever reasons, there's something incomplete there that you'd still like to see, you can also send that back to the committee with the, with the message to the committee, we want to approve this, just make these changes. Or the flip side of that is, if you believe that it's fleshed out well enough and you want to approve it, you could approve it even if, even if the recommendation was denied.
I mean, some of this is going to be a little muddy water, this is something new.
Let me, let me understand what you said there. So you're saying that a recommendation comes from the advisory council, the way this is structured now, that they recommend that something not be funded, we could still fund it.
I believe so.
Okay, I'll kind of roll that, give that's
Yeah, and I would feel comfortable defending that if there were ever to be some type of litigation challenging that. I cannot imagine that there would be, they want to strangle somebody if they filed a lawsuit over that, not allowed to do that.
Yeah, don't say that, you just totally, you got that on tape, Jeff.
But, but I would be, I would, I would be comfortable with our legal position that as the fiscal body, the entity responsible for appropriating funds, the council makes that final decision.
Yeah, one more question. Let's say this entity wanted fifty thousand, and the advisory committee said that's fine, and this council thought that that's, we should only give them thirty-five, can we change the amount that they're asking for?
Well, I think that's, that would be a good, a good opportunity to send it back, to send it back to the advisory with some instructions that
You don't have to send it back, you're like
I don't, yeah, I mean, I, I think you're right, I think, I think you could simply approve the thirty-five, but I, but I think that's also one you could send back if you think it needed to be evaluated.
Basically, this committee's going to give you some recommendations. This committee's going to give you some recommendations of how it could be spent. Do you agree or disagree, that's up to you guys. So, I mean, you could, you know, Jeff Hagerty may want a new attorney's car or something, you guys may not think that's a good idea.
Heart-lung machine.
Yeah, you might need that, or some pop drops, one or two, and, you know.
I still had a little bit of a problem with the police form is on the budget or the part arm is on the budget or something that they have to go through this additional. I just don't think that's right.
Okay.
Just any of that, just a minute.
All right, so we've had some discussion on it, do you want to go ahead and have
I'll do it.
Okay, because you're really having a hard time.
One more question. If we should, if we get into this and find out if something is not working up to what we feel should, how easy will we be to revise this or pass another resolution?
Just as easy as you're adopting it.
Just like, you tell me what you want, I type it up, the next regular meeting, we adopt a new ordinance to amend it. That is the other thing, you're the fiscal body and the legislative body, so as long as it can win a majority of council members and the mayor's signature, you can amend any ordinance you want.
Just a reference, the first ordinance was passed, made the third twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, thank you.
So, ordinance eleven-eighty-five, if you guys are ready to have this read, I intend a motion to allow Jeff to read ordinance eleven-eighty-five. Motion made by Julie, you're second.
I'll second that.
Second by Gary, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Gwen, just, I'm gonna let you read.
Okay. Ordinance number eleven-eighty-five and ordinance amending ordinance eleven-seventy-five. Whereas the common council of the city of Telsi adopted ordinance eleven-seventy-five establishing the ARP coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, so the city could receive American Rescue Plan funds. And whereas said ordinance provided at paragraph three, that the monies of the fund shall be appropriated by the common council, the council, before expenditure, and all expenditures shall be approved by the council with any and all claims to be paid from the fund. And whereas said ordinance provided at paragraph four, that the council will encourage public input in order to create the plan, conditions and rules, together, the plan, upon which the monies are to be requested and used. And whereas the mayor of Telsi, Indiana, resolved to establish a committee to review the possible use of said funds and make recommendations to the council regarding expenditures from the fund. And whereas the mayor of the city of Telsi established a Telsi ARP advisory committee to review the possible uses of the funds and to make recommendations to the council. And whereas the U.S. Treasury has adopted final rules which allow up to ten million dollars of the ARP funds awarded to be designated as standard allowance of revenue loss without proof of actual revenue loss due to the pandemic. And whereas, based upon the U.S. Treasury rules, the common council of the city of Telsi wishes to designate said funds as standard allowance of revenue loss. And whereas the common council of the city of Telsi wishes for the Telsi ARP advisory committee to continue to evaluate applications and requests for funds and provide recommendations regarding said applications and requests. Now therefore, it is hereby ordained that ordinance number eleven-seventy-five shall be amended to provide that the plan as required by ordinance number eleven-seventy-five and section six-oh-three C of the American Rescue Plan shall be amended as follows. Number one, the city of Telsi planned for the use of funds received by the city of Telsi from the American Rescue